Okay, welcome everybody. Today is May 26th. I hope everybody had a good Memorial Day weekend, got some rest. Everybody's safe and happy and all the children are above average. This time we'll have, please rise and we'll have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Dave. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Is there any additions or changes? Not an entertaining motion to approve?
We approve the agenda for Tuesday, May 26th.
I'll second that.
Moving on to second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item up is an action item, is our claims, board order claims. And I believe we have two junior college tuitions. Any questions or concerns? We've got plenty of time.
So in the general fund, we had a bunch of stuff for road department. So I'm questioning, I guess, under the general fund. So there was tires, pants, TLO investigation tools.
That's for the sheriff's office?
Gasoline for the sheriff. So that is all charged? Okay, I'm just looking at it wrong then.
Yeah, those are charges specifically for the sheriff's office.
Okay. And I had a split page there, so I apologize for that one. And then the software that we purchased for the extension office. So we spent $7,500, it looks like, on computer arts. Is that right? Or is that something also that I'm not looking at correctly? These come in split pages, so I can never tell where it's going.
The computer art software is not for the extension office, and I would...
Mine says county agent right above it, and that's what confused me a little bit. Okay, so that is just data processing then? Okay. That's all the questions I had. I just need to print them out, so I know they're on the right page. But when there's 30 pages, I hate to do that.
So we have two different, so the road department is the road department, but then the general fund that looks like the road department is more than that. So that's the difference between why you have some road department attorneys coming out of general fund and then others coming out of road department.
Okay.
So that's the difference.
Okay. Eventually I'll get it, I promise.
Casey, did you know on the workman's comp of 20,000, is that more than last year? Did that go up? Did it go up 5%?
Workers' comp did not. And that's what we received, that notification from.
So it's the same as last?
Idaho Association of Counties, right. It's based on, you know, the module that they provide us based on the categorization of the specific employees.
But you're thinking it's about the same as last year? That's what it was, it was over 100,000.
Which one went up Doug? What were we?
Medicals, medicals going up 5%?
I haven't said one of them, and I can't remember which one it was either, but...
Okay, if we're all good with claims and boarder claims, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and board order claims and junior college tuition.
One second.
Moving on to second, any more discussion?
Commissioner, just real quick, also tort is going up, Commissioner Mopkin. Our payment to ICrimp is also, will be increased for next year. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Doug, that was about 192,000?
Correct, 191,000 is what it's going to be for next year, for fiscal year 2021. We still need to vote on the...
On the tort?
On the claims.
Oh, didn't I say, all in favor, say aye?
No.
Sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks for reminding me.
That was one I remember, because I remember the $191,000. Price tag.
Did he get the tort domain?
I don't know how everybody's getting a haircut before I am. I think it's easier to get into the men's. Okay, just shave yours, I'm gonna come to your house and let you take care of mine. I'm getting so tired.
Thank you, Katie. Great day. Okay, we'll move on into elected official reports. First one up is Susanne Scher, June former. Good morning.
Morning. We are in the process of reviewing our assessment notices. We did send them down to EBS on Friday. So Sue Lieber and myself are going to be going through all those today to make sure that they got everything before we give them the green light. They will be in the mail by Friday. So Monday morning, the phone will start ringing. My front office gal who just got back, I sent an email to IT. She is going to be, we need a second phone. She is going to be a mother. So she let me know that this morning, and we definitely have to get, sorry David, we definitely have to get that second phone for safety because of her condition.
Just do right away, I take it?
No, no, not until January.
Oh.
There's gonna be more births in, somewhere in January.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, everybody was home, so...
So your front end girl, I don't know name yet, who is it?
Eliza. Yeah, she told me, she goes, well, I worked for the next few months as 1+ and I didn't get it. I'm like, huh? Duh. Yeah, she's, she's pretty excited, so, sorry David, didn't mean to throw you under the bus there or anything, but... Yes, please. Just a second phone at least, so that they're not sharing. We're trying to really be protective with her with COVID.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's...
Trying to see why you needed two phones.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at, is COVID and the phone's gonna be ringing, and they shouldn't be sharing phones, so. Brian, hopefully, I haven't heard anything from him, so we'll keep our fingers crossed for June 3rd.
June 3rd, and David sent an email the day they can come and help unhook him.
Oh, good, okay.
They're gonna be there to help.
Thank you, thank you very much.
What's that regarding?
Our DMV counter, it will be installed Wednesday morning, June 3rd. He said it should take about four hours.
And I don't see how it could take an hour, but it's getting there.
Yeah.
It's been challenging.
Have you seen it?
No.
Oh, okay, I haven't either.
I went down to see it, and he texted me on the way down, it's not quite ready yet. I wanna get it all stained and pretty before he show up.
Okay.
It is coming, I think.
Okay, so anyhow, that's kinda where we're at. Got everybody back to work, and Eliza's back now from homeschooling. And DMVs are going busy. They're very busy, but we're, we're doing it, so. Any questions for us, for me?
Is the appointment calendar thing working great?
They love it.
What I've heard, everybody kinda likes that.
It has been really good. I brought up the fact of maybe we could keep it, but they're going, mm, not when we open, because they said that if they have appointments and the appointment is shorter, then they could help whoever's next stand in line. But if that turns into be something longer, they pointed out lots of problems with it. So, but both offices, McCall and Cascade, both really like it. It's worked out really well.
Well, in the worst case scenarios, we end up like some of the other counties where we have lines out the front door, and we don't wanna do that either, so...
I'm really nervous about that, and especially for McCall. They have, because the bank's open, but the bank has been beyond helpful and cooperative with us. And they've kept that interior door locked, so that people cannot go back there. And the appointments have worked out really good, but I'm very nervous for them. When we do open, there will be lines outside.
Okay, any questions for June? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Doug. Good morning Doug, good to see you again.
For those of now, for those that have not heard, there was a federal lawsuit filed on Friday in which Judge Lynn Windmill made a decision that the absentee ballot applications has been extended until today. So our office will be open until 8:00 PM this evening, continuing to process any absentee ballot applications. You will need to go to idahovotes.gov in order to request those applications. So again, we will be meeting that, that decision that was made, and we'll be remaining open until 8:00 PM this evening, processing any new absentee ballot applications that come in. So far, we've issued 4,300, which is about 60% of the registered voters. And that's what I have to report on that. The deadline for those ballots to be returned to us has not changed. It still is in fact June 2nd, with the possibility of that being challenged as well. But at this point in time, those ballots need to be returned to us on June 2nd. We will be processing them this evening, mailing them out tomorrow, and then again, those will need to be returned to us by June 2nd.
So then, if they have, if they mail a ballot in today, wait a minute. You're saying they can get them today and mail them in, they have to be here by the 2nd?
Correct, we again, yeah, we have to, again, due to the lawsuit that was filed and the decision that was made by Judge Lynn Windmill, we need to continue to accept absentee ballot applications through this evening.
So those folks online, it's not too late to vote yet. Get your ballot in.
I think McKenzie's been putting that out on social media also, but...
I tried to reach out to her on Saturday and did not hear back from her, so I'm hoping that she was able to put something.
I'll shoot her something really quick. So of the 4,300 ballots, how many have you gotten back in yet?
I can't tell you that at this point in time. What we're doing is we're processing them in batches, but we really won't have a final figure of the returned ballots until we start the tabulation.
Just concerned you're gonna get 2,000 of them back right in the last...
We probably will. Again, we'll be, we'll be working diligently and through the evening on the 2nd to make sure that all the ballots that we have received are processed, tabulated in order for us to have an accurate count.
And I think the last election, we only had a little over 2,700 voters, and you're up to...
For the presidential primary, it was low, yeah, the turnout was about 30%, so it was extremely low.
We almost doubled.
It's nice to see that the voters are in fact coming out to vote for this election, with about a 60% turnout.
That's great.
So that's elections. We have continued to meet with elected officials and department heads for their budgets. We did not schedule any budget workshops today due to the afternoon calendar, afternoon agenda that the commissioners have. So we will begin the budget workshops again next week. We've met with the road department twice, just to prepare them for their presentation to the commissioners. I anticipate that's going to be a significant amount of time that you wanna spend with the road department. So our office is taking some more steps to meet with the road department just to make sure that we're prepared during the budget workshops. So again, we're continuing to work with elected officials and department heads on their budget meetings with myself in order for them to officially have their budget workshops with the commissioners. And we'll begin that again next week.
Doug, on the gas tax, when do they get that? What time of year are those?
Period, it's quarterly.
Oh, it's quarterly?
Yeah.
So that will be the thing that'll kinda help us set that budget, I think, is what the...
We'll have to project the revenue, right? And what we're hearing, I guess I can speak briefly on that topic. What we're hearing right now is between a 20% reduction in our revenue sharing that we receive, that the county clerks are taking a look at, between 20 and 13% reduction for those revenue, those revenue sharing, tax revenue sharing dollars that we receive. There was a discussion about that on Friday. So that's really what we're kinda looking at regarding those general fund tax sharing dollars that the county receives from the state.
When will we know on that, a firm answer? End of the year?
July.
July?
Realistically, July is when we'll have a better understanding of what we should project for those tax dollars.
But we know we're at least gonna get a 13% hit. It could be as high as 20.
It could be as high as 20.
So 400,000?
Pardon me?
Approximately 400,000.
Well, again, this is broken out differently for the tax sharing. Now, regarding the fuel tax, that, that's different, because that's tied to, you know, the travel of individuals. So that, that potentially could be different. Again, I don't know what the projected holdback for that is potentially going to be, but we will know, you know, further down the road of what to project in that revenue line.
13% is gonna be hard to fly.
20% will be worse.
And what we're looking at is based on the last, last time we had a significant recession, what the reduction was back then. So that's kinda the figures that we're looking at. But again, we'll, we'll be able to speak on this a little bit more, provide a little bit more solid figures, probably in July regarding that revenue.
Since I haven't looked at that before, what kind of cost sharing? I mean, give me a round figure of what we receive.
About 400,000.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, between 400 and 500,000 dollars is what we receive for the tax sharing.
Okay, thank you. That's a lot better than I was thinking, 2 million, so...
Right. Courts, we have a pretty heavy day today with, we have five preliminary hearings. I'd like to publicly thank the IT department for working with us diligently on making sure that all of the attorneys were equipped on, actually educated on how to use the equipment to present evidence. The IT department took one day to work with the courts, the attorneys, prosecuting attorney, defense counsel, to make sure that there were no hiccups. So again, I publicly appreciate the work that the IT department has done related to that, because it's a significant request. Again, it's a completely change in how we handle those preliminary hearings. And today, we'll be having five that are, my understanding, five that are going. So we'll, and prosecuting attorney Carol Brockman will be attending those this afternoon. And she has made arrangements, my understanding, for someone to be present from her office this afternoon. And I think that's, I've taken up my time, I appreciate it.
Okay.
We have a lot of heroes working for Valley County right now.
All right, thanks Doug. At this time, I'm gonna ask Scott to come up and give us a quick review on the north end.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning Scott.
Yeah, north end's moving right along smoothly. Thursday and Friday last week, we got it painted. Looking really good, it's a lot brighter in there. Tomorrow, they're gonna start sheet rocking the northeast office.
And they're gonna frame all that in?
Yes.
Are they gonna build a wood floor in that room to level it?
I don't believe it's gonna be a wood floor. You're just gonna level it out with that flooring. I don't have a word for it.
It's like a fix all?
Like a concrete.
Yeah, float?
Yes.
Okay.
And we did put a heater in. It's ready to, the heater's there, so they can sheet rock over the heater. But they're gonna further walls out and then sheet rock. I have a, some samples here for the north end floor. And I also have three sheets I'll hand to you guys. This is the price estimate to put this hardwood floor in.
So we did get those Scott?
Did you get those?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
And the carpeting.
Scott, what does the flooring guy recommend? Have you talked to him?
I haven't talked to him, but he gave us that quote here for over 15,000 dollars for that. And then the carpet, we already have.
The carpet was around 5,000?
It was 6,500, I believe.
And that's the same that we put in the DMV squares?
Yes. Yes, and it looks really, really good. And if you get a wet spot or whatever, we could just pull it up and put another one back in to give us some extras in a box. And that's quite expensive there.
You know the difference in warranty? For warranty on either one of these that we should be aware of?
I don't have a warranty yet. I'll leave that with you guys, you guys can look at it.
Well, if it's at least twice the money or even a little bit more, my feeling is to go with the carpet, the squares.
Sounds good.
But they're gonna have to do an awful lot of work floating that floor to get it pretty leveled.
They sure are.
Carpeting's 9,500.
I thought you said it was 65.
It's carpet?
Yeah, I've got a quote, 7,000. 95 for carpet?
That's what we got from Ryan.
Okay.
And there's no warranty on the carpet from getting wet and molding.
No, but if this stuff here gets wet, it doesn't, doesn't last very long either.
This is actually waterproof? We put this into places where there is water infiltration. So, I mean, that's my only thing, is let's make sure that we do something that is a viable product over where we're putting it. So the carpeting, they're gonna do sealant down?
Sealant down before the carpeting, yes. Yes. My, my thought on the wood, hopefully, we won't have any more water problems, you know, if we just continue to steam. In that one corner, I was telling you, by the old DMV, when we used to water the grass, it'd come through and go right on to the floor. We don't water the grass there anymore. Somebody ever make a little park right there? Carpet, be easier to take a square up and put a square down, rather than this, if it ever did get wet. I believe it's tongue in groove, be harder to replace this.
Yep, this stuff, when it goes bad, you gotta do the whole floor.
Right.
So the carpeting, would it be similar to what's in the courthouse here?
It'd be similar to what's in the new DMV down the hall, first floor.
Those are the, what is it, three foot wide, two foot wide?
I think they're 24 by 24, and it's the same carpet we have in the upstairs ELC. Come in squares, and they have rubber backs for water. Really pretty nice.
So you're looking direction from us of what, what we would like to see?
Yeah, yes.
David, I'd like to ask you how you feel, what do you want? Since IT's going in, do you want carpet or hardwood? Good answer. Dave?
I was leaning towards carpet for the price. Yeah, 15,000 for the hardwood seemed a little high.
So let's go with the carpet.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll get it going. Another thing I'd like to talk about is the dump. The dump wants, Lake Shore Disposal wants to loan us a generator for backup power. They seem to have quite a few power surges at the dump for some reason. I mean, we have them out here all the time too. But they wanna loan us a generator, a 5,000 watt roll generator for backup power. And I just want permission from you, if we can borrow a generator from them. I wasn't sure if we'd wanted to do that or not. I did get, what they wanna run is scales, PCs, heat, and maybe a couple lights when they have a power surge.
Do they have surge protectors on all those systems, you know?
They should, especially the computers, David's computer.
We had to do that all, everything in my house, because it took out all kinds of stuff. I think if that's, if they wanna donate it, and maybe we can help wire it in.
Well, I've checked my electricians in 5,000 watt, 240 volt, 30 amp system, which is on that generator theirs, who work perfect. We're backing up the scales, especially the scales, and those three other items. It'll work, and they'll just wheel it in next to the building. When we have a power surge, they'll start it for the girls. And then my electricians will have a plug-in, what they can just plug right into, and it'll, it'll power that little, little house.
I noticed this month, we got some builders, other generators that I'm assuming for like ELC and jail. Yes, are those, are those kinda similar setup?
A lot bigger, yeah. The jail generator is a 460 Kohler, and it runs everything, just the necessaries for the jail and mechanical room, plus it runs 911 upstairs in the third floor room.
Okay.
Yep, and then the ELC generator is a big ONN. It runs ELC on emergency, if we have a disaster, no power. ELC will be run, that generator runs everything in ELC. And McCall PD, we have a little Detroit, and it runs everything in McCall. I mean, just the necessary stuff for heating and cooling and pumps and whatnot.
Dave, are you okay with this, since it's your department?
This is his department. Yes. I just wanted your permission to...
We'll lay short a thank you note.
Yes, I will, yeah. I've talked to Scott Carnes quite a bit on it, so it's gonna be good. Okay, another thing I'd like to talk about is our new heat source bid. What do you guys, oh, what do you all think about the new?
We can't, is that an action item?
Yeah, it should be on the agenda. No?
Nope.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda again, darn it.
Okay.
Did we get the bid? I haven't seen a bid, I don't think.
Yeah, I said to you.
It's around 11,000, wasn't it?
Yes, 11,000.
Scott, let's, let's send that back out again, and then let's make sure we get on the agenda next week as an action item.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir. The last thing is capital improvements. Last meeting, Commissioner Mopkin mentioned a couple of red items on the list. And I've got a price for one red item on the list, is the back parking lot here. Our back parking lot is falling apart. The gravel, the asphalt is coming up, we have potholes. I mean, it's a mess. It used to be, 10 years ago, I used to stripe it, it used to look pretty good. We have a real problem back here, it's falling apart. And I got a price from Granite, 30,550 dollars. Take everything out and put all new in, oil and striped.
30,500.
30,500.
Okay, just for this lot, not the one across the street?
No, the one across the street is really good shape, because it was done not too long ago. But this one here, it's been cut up, patched, potholes. That's the price I have for that. It's 11,250 square feet back here.
Doug, where would that money come out of if we decide to do this? You know, fund, reserve?
You could do, you could utilize pilt, you could utilize courthouse facilities trusts or general fund reserve. If it was something that was, you wanted to decide on right now for this fiscal year, or if it's something that you wanted to budget for, for next year, that would be an option as well.
I guess my concern right now is I wanna see how much we're gonna lose from state funding before we go forward with this, but how do you guys feel?
I guess it's, you know, how, how can they repair it to be able to last until we know? Because right now is your timeframe in order to do this.
I've talked to Olson, I've had Toby come over and look at it. Those guys know their asphalt pretty good, and so does Granite. And he just oiled over the top of this, and he recommended it wouldn't work, it'd just come up. Temporary, I think we can get by another winter, for sure. Work on this for next year, be a good idea. This would, back here, spruce up this whole courthouse. If this was new, new and striped and everything, this courthouse would look just spectacular.
I know a few years back, we had Jeff come in and patch some of those bigger holes.
We did.
It worked for a while, but they're all coming back up.
Yeah, and I've, I've put gravel in them and, and patched myself in all of them. They end up coming up, just like the highway roads.
I guess my feeling right now, Scott, is let's wait and see what the state does to us on funding. Well, no in July. Well, no in July. And maybe after that, if we get full funding, then we can go forward with this.
Okay. Sounds good.
I don't want to short us.
And I have a, back to capital improvements, the ADA door for downstairs. I mean, we put on hold for this COVID and everything else going on. I can get another price for, I only gave you one price, but I can get another price for the same thing from another company.
That'd be great because I think that one came in at fifteen thousand per door. It's like, yeah, it's, it's expensive.
What's expensive is the auto, auto openings.
Right.
The ADA is really expensive.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. And then just get back to us.
Oh, any more questions?
Any more questions for Scott? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your help.
I might as well take this back.
Okay. Carol's not here, so we'll move on. Sheriff. Morning.
Good morning.
How's the campaigning going?
It's going.
In the middle of all this.
Have a lot of time for that.
Yeah.
So, as you all could see, we had a lot of people up here this last weekend realizing the waterways and wherever they could find camping. And I know that the campgrounds, IDPR campgrounds will open up this next weekend. So I anticipate we'll have a lot more people. Few accidents, one serious up out of tripod and had lifelight a person down to the valley.
Was that an ATV accident? And I thought that was, well, I guess they're open on the weekends, aren't they? There, the loggers are going to close all that so they could get the logging in there.
Yeah. So for now, people are everywhere. We have had a little bit of movement of inmates. So this, I had reported before that the state had took six and then they took another six females. And then second time of males, but then we've got six back.
Oh, six fresh inmates.
So they're, they're in the one location for ten days.
Well, I got a call from Health District and they want to interview probably Mike, I don't know, or you on how well we've done with the jail.
Oh, we've done excellent.
Yeah, we've been really good and they want to come in and maybe do a little PR thing on it. So we'll see if it happens. They're going to call me back this week.
We did have a complaint about social distancing from the visitors to the county. And we're wondering how that could be enforced, but I think that that needs to be the businesses. And I, maybe we could reach out through them, through the chambers and just reiterate that they need to make sure that there's some social distancing as the people are within or standing outside of their facilities.
Well, I see the new signs out south of town.
Yeah.
Which I think will help. They're kind of grouping, so they're hard to read, but I don't know who put them up, but.
Yeah. I think the locals are being pretty good about it, but just need to.
So someone complained that it come to town, that there was no social distancing.
There are no local residents going to, like to the grocery stores or downtown or, and noticing that. And we just wonder what we would do about that. And I know that before some of those businesses could open, they had to have their plan in place. They'd go through Central District Health to get approval and to open up. But I think once you get so many people, it's a little bit difficult to try to enforce all that. So just maybe that they'd be more attentive to that and the lines that are waiting outside. So.
I will shoot an email over to the Business Task Force. We have our COVID Task Force that is actually working on how to reopen safety.
Okay.
So they meet weekly and I will shoot out an email to them to let them know that.
Yeah, D nine was like scary this weekend. I went in there once and it was pretty crowded. Okay, anything else?
Yep.
All right. Be safe.
All right.
Thank you. Fraser.
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners and Clerk Miller.
Morning.
Our number of parcels in the tax deed processor is down to thirty-nine, so we're continuing to collect on those. Reminder notices for the second half, property tax installments went out the week before last. So our office is getting busy, phone calls and tax payments. We do have an action item on the agenda today to set the tax deed hearing date.
When do you do that in August? When do we do that?
Usually in August. I'd like to recommend August seventeenth.
August seventeenth?
Yes. At one PM, if that works with the calendar.
You got, oh, there we go.
Mr. Chairman, we actually don't have our agenda set for August just yet. We'll need to do that next week. But what we can do is just make sure that we, if the commissioners do approve that date, we'll just make sure that we get that on the agenda once all of the dates are set.
Okay. Is everybody good with seventeen? Should I entertain a motion?
Motion that we set the tax deed hearing date for August seventeenth. Okay.
At one PM?
At one PM, if it works.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? Oh, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, before we go on really quick, so we had a question whether tax notices could actually be emailed versus hard copies. And I noticed online that it says sign up for your online tax notices. Do we have to do both, you know?
I'm sorry.
So if somebody signs up for online tax notices, do we have to send a physical one also?
No, we don't. If they, if they sign up, then it's, we don't send one, we don't mail one out.
Okay, perfect. We got that question and know the answer.
And, and you have what, two thousand people that have signed up? What did you say?
I actually don't know how many have signed up. I'll have to, I'll have to find out. Well, I'm sorry.
That might just be something that we target and appropriate date to actually push that word out to try and do that and save on postage and make it so that people actually receive them.
And you can, you can pay online too, right?
You can pay online, yes. Yeah, we did have an insert with our statements that went out in November that highlighted that opportunity, but we can certainly do that again.
It might just be something, you know, having McKenzie put it on the website a certain time of the year or something, whatever it would be most appropriate, post it on social media, just to get more people to our online site.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm just wondering how that would hold up if it was challenged. I didn't get the email or I didn't get that, so I didn't pay my taxes.
If they signed up for it, then they would be accountable to that.
I hope that relieves the liability.
State statute does address electronic statements, and so they're, they're permitted. It's the taxpayer's responsibility to pay their taxes or, you know, and make sure that they do receive those statements.
The wave of the future.
Yeah.
So I got three of mine, but I didn't get my home one, which is interesting. So.
Okay. Maybe it's lost in the mail.
I'm going to sign up for electronic.
Good, good.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have for the treasurer's.
So we'll move into solid waste?
Yeah. I talked with you last time about the, the issues in Yellow Pine with some damage that had been done. Jeff and I actually traveled up there Wednesday last week. As it turned out, Tuesday evening, the doors, the doors fell off. That was a big, that was a big.
At Yellow Pine or Orme Lake?
Yellow Pine.
Okay.
So that, that big post had, had been knocked, you know, knocked forward by a bin. Lake Shore pulled it out. Anyway, the whole thing, the post and the doors came down that evening. So we were able to get a, get a new six by six up there and some hardware and it's all put back together.
Very nice.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, some help from locals, three locals helped.
Can we bill Lake Shore for the damage?
Yeah, I've got that worked out with Lake Shore. We're actually, they're actually going to give us a credit. They're going to do a free, free run to Yellow Pine and then not charge us for some signage that, that we had on order.
Okay.
So it actually worked out very well for the county. I think the total bill was around nine hundred dollars and we got about fifteen hundred dollars in savings through the deal.
Good job.
Yeah. Just a reminder, next week is the free and reduced dump days. Those are Wednesday through Saturday.
Can we get that on the web or is it on the web?
It's on, it is on a transfer station.
And is it going in the paper this week?
Um, I believe it is. I'll have to check with Colin.
I think I would check, double check and make sure it hits the paper, too.
Yeah.
I know a lot of people are waiting.
Okay.
I will send McKenzie an email and ask her to, her out on social media also.
Okay, great.
Give me those days again, Dave.
It'll be Wednesday through Saturday.
Hey, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have Whitecap. We have Annette. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, we've issued ninety-five permits. Last year it's fifty-five, so we're still quite a bit up there. And we do have thirty-four houses as of right now out of those ninety-five permits. We did hire somebody. She'll start next Tuesday.
Can you give us a name?
Marcia Mead.
Marcia Mead?
Yep.
Thank you.
Tamarack's picking up. They're coming to turn in some more plans today for another part of Tamarack. And they're picking up another set of plans for proceeding today. So we're just busy.
Did you ever get a separate email for your plans that you talked last?
We did get it.
All done?
Yes.
Good.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, David.
Yeah, thank you, David.
Make the team.
Yes, thank you very much. Really, that's all I got. I got listed on there about doing city of inspection.
Oh.
Or city of Cascade inspections. Darrell Shepherd called me a few weeks ago and wants to know if I could just do his inspection since he's a concrete guy. And he's the building official for Cascade. So I told him I'd just run it by you guys. It might be twice a year. I don't know.
You mean do his inspections, the jobs he's doing?
The jobs he has done.
Oh, I see. So there's a conflict with him doing his own inspections.
Right.
Hmm.
I don't know.
I don't know about that. Is that a kosher pat? Are we okay with that?
That was done. He did it and it is.
Yeah.
Kind of makes sense.
And it would just be the ones that he, he does.
You guys have a concern enough? All right.
Okay, now let's hold on.
That's it. Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Maybe, so that was an action item. I don't know if we need to approve that. But I would like to put specifically in there because the way that it's written, a city of Cascade building inspection, I don't want us to be on the hook to do all city of Cascade building inspections. So I think we need to be pretty, you know.
Why don't we do, why don't you do a motion?
And what's the gentleman's name again?
Darrell Shepherd.
But he's a city inspector. Your motion could do, be something about just inspect the city inspector job or something like that.
I just specifically, so what you're saying is so if he leaves, then we're.
If he's doing, he's a concrete guy as well. So if he does a concrete job, he can inspect his own work. So Annette would have to come in and inspect that. But that could get out of hand, so.
Right.
Well, that time we'll have to revisit maybe.
Any jobs that he doesn't do, then he would have to inspect.
Right.
So I move that we approve that our building inspector can inspect Darrell Shepherd's personal jobs so that there is no conflict of interest with his position at the city of Cascade.
That works great. Any more discussion? Oh, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There you go. Thank you. Scott, you're up. Evan, you might want to introduce yourself to these folks.
I'm Josh Van, with the Court Services Probation Department of the Annexville. Morning, all.
Welcome.
Morning. Filling in for Skip. I don't have a lot, but I can throw out some numbers for you. We've been supervising the adult misdemeanor probation caseloads right at seventy-eight right now. It is a little down from what we're used to due to the court system being, you know, screeching halted. But we're doing our best. Face-to-face contact's been limited. We've utilized a lot of technology. David set up our staff with video conferencing so we can do, pull a look at each other on the laptop meetings. We've also had a lot of phone conversations and reaching out, maintaining contact via phone. The highest risk clients that we have, we've utilized a lot of our technology as far as monitoring equipment to make sure, you know, they're being monitored twenty-four seven, sure they're doing okay with sobriety. We've also been utilizing more so than we usually do, the treatment provider, the local treatment provider in McCall, Central Idaho Counseling. Through this whole ordeal, they've maintained their drug and alcohol urine testing program through BPA guideline protocol. So we've referred a lot of our clients to them for the testing portion, obviously, because our doors were locked and we're trying to limit, you know, the, the direct contact with people coming in and out of there. So we utilize them a lot for our testing. And they're also maintaining treatment through telehealth. So they're able to work with our clients and continue with their groups via telehealth. Again, looking at them over the laptop. But it's been very effective and it's, it seems to have really kept everybody on track as far as, you know, higher risk clients especially.
So you feel it's as effective as having somebody, you know, with you? I mean, if you can visually see them and be able to communicate at any time, then.
It, it's better, but I don't know that you can replace direct face-to-face where you can read body language and eye contact and just the emotional side of people. But it's better than nothing. We were pretty scared there for a while thinking we're going to have a big fall off on our high-risk clients and becoming a risk to community safety and themselves and others. So it worked out well the way, the way they kept going. It's helped our department a lot as far as our clients. And again, our monitoring with the highest, highest risk, they know they're being monitored. It's looking at them every night when they go to bed. It's on their leg. It's, you know, in their pocket where they got to breathe in it. So they know they have to stay the course because we're continuing to see that data. We're still accepting transfers from out of county. It's, it's been challenging that we have, you know, any clients that are on probation moving into Valley County. We are taking those on and working it out the best we can to set up their probation.
How many of those you get a month? Couple?
It varies, maybe one, yeah, couple of months. Probably a solid average.
How many move out?
They come and go.
Kind of balance.
They come here to work, you know, like they get a construction job and so they transfer up here and they want to live up here for six months to a year working. We'll take those cases on and continue to supervise them. And it's a reciprocated agreement. I mean, we have a lot of our clients that we send down to bigger counties, EA County, Canyon County. And then they do the same for us as far as supervising people. But we're still accepting those and it's amazing. I, I know Officer Wilson and even, well, I'll get to Ms. Phillips, the juvenile probation officer. She does have twenty, let's see, what? Twenty-five juveniles right now that she's supervising. So along with pre-trial release, she does a lot of the pre-trial release people. Officer, Officer Clapp also monitors some, some of the pre-trial cases. So she's busy. She's got a lot of kids and she's keeping tabs on. And she's got, she's got her platefold. There's a lot of hands, a lot of contact that takes place with juveniles that you have to maintain to keep, keep them on track. So as far as our adult caseload, Officer Wilson and myself, it's crazy when all this COVID hit and, and doors were being locked and probation was shut down. I mean, that was a word on the street. We panicked thinking, you know, we're going to have a big spiral downward with our clients. We, we experienced actually the opposite. It seemed just sociologically, the panic that people feel as human beings, we were getting really good response when we were reaching out to our clients, high risk from low to high and everywhere in between. They actually, it's like they connected and wanted to hear our voice. They needed our support and they wanted our, you know, our input. So it was really talking, but it, it turned out good. And even to some of the clients that were struggling, they still wanted to talk us, talk with us and work through and get help. And it was very, very eye-opening to Ms. Wilson and myself.
That's interesting because you thought those guys would have gone off the deep end.
You think it'd be a free pass to go out in the woods and tie one on, right? But it really was the opposite. I was, I was really shocked by that. But that's in a nutshell what we've got going on there. It's just picking how we do business and trying to do the best we can with efficient.
And you saw now Volcat, Volcat's rehab and unemployment are still coming in?
No, they have not been.
They haven't.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, they, they've.
Yeah, they, they have approached the commissioners to determine what the commissioner, if the commissioners will allow them to return or not. That is a decision that the commissioners were, will have to make. My understanding is the commissioners wanted to see from Voc Rehab when they were going to be able to start meeting with their clients face-to-face. I think that you guys were holding off making a decision until you heard when the governor, when the state was going to be allowing those employees to meet face-to-face with those individuals participating in those programs.
And I just talked to Julie last week at Department of Labor, and they will not meet face-to-face until at least July 1st.
July 1st, I didn't assume June, but it sounds like they're getting everything done online, so it's, their system is working. I figured that was coming sooner or later, they're going to come back in here, but.
I can share with you, they do in fact want to. They want to continue to utilize the annex and the courthouse. So at some point in time, the commissioners will have to make a decision on that.
I guess my feeling Doug is they gotta, you should come in and ask or talk and, you know, come in and sit down and we can figure it out. When they, when they can legally do it, then contact us.
We can reach out to them and get them on the agenda if you would like, commissioners.
And we already approved for them to do it though? I mean, it's suspended.
I'm trying to remember, I thought they were already in the annex, but it was suspended here.
No, they were using this area too. There was a conversation on where, because we've moved people around, so they didn't really know where they're going to go back to, but.
Well, if they can't go back to July 1st, we got some time to think about this. Okay, anything else, Doc?
I got nothing else for you.
Thanks for coming in, it's good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you guys.
Okay, Melissa's not here, so we'll go to Pat. Human Resources.
Yes, sir.
Melissa's trying to call in, I just haven't got her number. And I was unaware that we had anyone by police.
Why don't you just text her the number?
Should I go ahead and start and tell she?
Uh, let's see what happens here.
All right.
Welcome to Life Size. Enter the extension of the person you want to call or the meeting.
Did you send it to her?
Joining the meeting.
Melissa, are you there?
She doesn't have the number yet, we've got to find the number for her.
Okay, so let's go ahead, Pat, we'll do you, she's, we're getting dialed up and she can go after you, I guess.
Okay, sounds fair. All kinds of things for me today. I did send out the janitorial contract and wanted to make sure that the scope of work, duties to be reformed, whatever it's called, that section, let me see, is what you all had in mind as far as the cleaning and sanitizing. I tried to capture exactly what we wanted. It's a description of services to be provided. There was a little bit in the contract, Ryan caught it, that there was a little bit of discrepancy, because it said that they would clean two days a week. But then later on, under description of services, we talked about sanitizing all door handles and cleaning the first and second floor restaurants every day. So I went back and fixed that one section, so it says, "or as otherwise listed in the description, services to be provided." So I just wanted to make sure I got all your feedback, and if there was any changes that we needed to be made, then I'll send it to Warren. Warren will make sure that the dollar amount and everything is correct, and then once that's done, then it'll come back to you all for approval. So we're just kind of in that, that, that's why it's not an action item, because it's not done.
Well, this is really kind of a change of his job that he's got to do. How do you feel about leaving the actual monetary value blank and letting him fill in that in?
Yeah, and that's fine, what I did do is him and Doug, I just put something there for now. But him and Doug talked about, you know, adding 450, so I took the, the fee that he had before, added the 450, and then I stopped.
And that was approved by the commissioners?
It was approved by the commissioners, yeah.
That was, when we had, when there was a request to do additional cleaning.
Right, right, but what I don't know is what he's going to charge us for the extra hour a night for them to go into the restrooms and sanitize them. So I, when I send it back to him, I'll have him give us the amount, and that's what you all will approve as once finalized, so.
So the 28, 25 per month is cleaning five days a week?
That is cleaning three days a week and then sanitizing, or coming through and wiping down all the door handles and any of the public counters.
And that's, because it's still up top on the compensation, it says, for cleaning three times per week. But I didn't see it add the other responsible.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, didn't update it one to you, but I've added that verbiage, something like unless, unless otherwise noted in the description of services to be provided. So the next one will have that verbiage in there. Okay.
Everybody good with that?
So there, yeah, there's no action item, I just want to make sure that I have the right description of services there. So the, I ordered, thank you Sheri for that website for the estate. I did get, we did get two gallons of sanitizer that we can go through and, and buildings and grounds or the janitorial people or somebody can go through and fill the, the little containers with sanitizers. I also got gloves, I got 200 gloves and 100 to 200 masks. I can't remember exactly how many I got, but they've come, so they're here. Mary has some of the mask and the gloves, I want to talk to Scott and Ryan before I gave all of them to her. So we have those, and that's exciting. If we could just get these wives, that'd be even better, but not yet.
I did ask Scott three jobs to use since the sanitizer hadn't been put in the bathroom yet, so he's going to touch base with you.
Awesome, good, yeah.
And Pat, you might want to check Family Dollar over, because they had a bunch of those here last weekend.
These?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
They're gone already?
We'll have to find out when they get them in.
Larry?
I'm talking to somebody that says they have it stocked, but I'm trying to pick up eight of the hand sanitizer tanks for all the toilets, and I asked for 20 gallons of the sanitizer and didn't see that there would be a problem with that. I haven't got a price on it yet.
Awesome.
Good, okay.
We've hired two detention officers, and then the permit tech that Annette was talking about, they will start on June 2nd. So we'll do orientation and get them all squared away, and life will be good. The next action item that I have was a telecommuting policy. And it's, we had it on the, the agenda a while back, but you all haven't had an opportunity to read it yet, so hopefully got to see it.
Actually, Pat, I did read it.
Yeah.
I think it looks pretty good. I'm trying to remember, did we have in here talk about working at night versus working normal business hours?
I added that, I remember you guys talking about that.
Isn't it at the request of your supervisor?
Yes, yes.
So as long as they're talking to their supervisor about it, they're approved, yeah.
Yeah. I can't remember where it was. And I think that's why we, it might have been, I'm trying to remember. I remember the conversation.
It's under time worked.
Yeah. Working hours, that's right. Hours worked in SS, yeah, yep.
David, did you have a chance to look at this?
Yeah, we worked together on this.
Is this, and you're good with it? I like it on a case-by-case basis, that way of, if someone is maybe abusing the privilege, that it can be re-looked at and changed.
Well, I like the fact that this particular policy that I grabbed also allows for a 30-day trial period. So there's a trial period, and if it doesn't work, then, you know, we reserve the right to pull it back. And we do it any moment anyway, if it's not going to function well. So that was an action item.
Everybody good with this?
Yep.
So I would entertain a motion?
Yeah, I think it looks good, Pat, thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
That we approve the telecommuting policy?
Thanks, Pat, and David, for all your work on this, this is a lot.
I think we need to be better prepared for, you know, if we have to do it again.
Especially if we get around to COVID things.
Yeah, exactly.
So we got a motion on the floor, any more discussion? In favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and go ahead.
Okay, so the next thing we had was approval of grant rider moving to three-quarter status. We had this conversation two weeks ago when Mary was in here, about what we wanted to do with that. And in, or talking with Mary, she said she's kept her hours to 19 hours per week, but when she was working on another grant, she's worked 24 hours, which means that cuts into her hours, so now she's going to have to cut back to like 15 hours for, you know, two weeks to cut her six, 14 hours, to cut those hours back. So it, it means that in order for her to keep under 19, she has to shorten her hours certain weeks so that it'll average out to 19. But what we talked about is that obviously the more hours and the more grants that she can apply for, obviously there would be administrative fees that we get off of that grant, it'd probably pay for it.
That's the goal, yeah.
Yeah, so what we are wondering is if she could work up to 29 and a half hours. Now, what that means to the county at 29 and a half hours is now that we, we have to cover Percy for Mary, plus she's eligible for three-quarter time on the vacation sick as well. So there is more of an expense than just her hours to doing that. So that was, you know, that was why I'm bringing it back.
I think it's really great to see how well she's done there, and I can see a lot of grants coming in here pretty quick, and we're going to go, this is great, we need to go full-time eventually, but I, I'm behind this 100%. I think it's, we're asking too much of her, we're going to burn her up if we don't compensate her for it, so.
Right. Well, and, and you know, on October 1st, as part of the budgeting process, we can budget for the full-time with the full benefits, if that's what you all want to do, so.
You're good with it, Mary?
Yeah, I'm great, thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion then to take our grant rider to three-quarter time.
I'll make motion that we approve the grant rider moving to three-quarter time status.
When do you want to start this, this week?
Yeah, because if she, actually, probably, it's a pain, but it'd probably be better to go back to May 1st, because she's already worked the 24 hours, those two weeks.
Okay.
And that way we can encompass that and not get us in trouble with Percy.
That would be great, does that work for you? Okay, we got a motion on the floor, move it saying in, 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 in. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And that's it?
Yeah, that's all I have, unless you have something for me. I think I covered everything.
I think we're good. Okay, Melissa, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you want to go ahead and give your report?
Sure, sorry, I had some call-in challenges, but I have it all lined up now.
No problem.
I continue to meet with the office staff on Monday and Friday, and so this morning we met before the commissioners meeting, and so I'm coming from that meeting. But that's just a nice Zoom report out what's on your plate this week, and then on Friday we report out what we accomplished and identify what needs to be carried over to the next week. And so we're continuing to do the inter-office communication. As far as what I'm reporting out on is, last week we had a local food roundtable discussion, and so we have people from New Meadows down to Cascade involved, and it spanned from food access to local production and anything really food-related and what people, what was on people's minds. We actually had someone from council that grows in council and sells to the McCall area join in on the call. And so that was part of the West Central Mountain Food Coalition efforts, and those Zoom calls look like they're going to be carried forward monthly, just to have that communication together. We have the farmers markets status on those, report out at the meeting, and I'm looking forward to just helping with that communication for the region. This week, I have the Tusick Moth presentation this evening with the Idaho Department of Land, and then I grasshopper presentation via Zoom on Thursday with Dan. And so I'm going to be reaching out to those presenters, finding a time with the band to make sure we can test the equipment and make sure everybody feels comfortable with Zoom and, and doing that type of presentation. And so for a lot of us, you know, we're continuing to onboard people with that technology and learn as we go. And so that is part of the process this week as well. I am working on two publications, which are just something that I always seem to have on my plate that gets put down at the bottom. And so I'm really needing to wrap up the greenhouse one that I've referenced previously, and then I'm starting a new one with, about steering committees and forming steering committees in community development work. And so that one, I'm working with some educators around the state, I'm developing that bulletin. I'm hoping to release a story map this week that will delineate local growers for the area as well as food access locations, which would include cantries and whitecaps and other sources. So hopefully that will launch and that will live on the West Central Mountain Food Coalition webpage, and then we'll share it out through Facebook, Bell, and then we'll communicate over the phone or Zoom to people that tune into those meetings about that resource. That's what I have going on. Megan has been doing a lot of asynchronous video creation, which is a learning curve for us as well. And she's developing content for that, but we're being very tactful about copyrights and, and trying to figure out what is open source and what we can utilize appropriately for those videos. And then Allison is working on Fairbook and going to be opening up a garden class with the beds that are in front of our office, and organizing some more sowing days, and continuing, continuing to work on fair entry and standing for fair and getting, last week she had the sheep and the goat weigh-in, and she spaced those, the timing of those, so it was all done appropriately in today's day and age. And that's what I've been up to, any questions?
So Melissa, is the Food Coalition, are you guys working with McCall Farmers Market? I know that there's a huge social media press right now to try and put growers together with consumers, since the, I know Donley's Farmers Market's opening, but McCall is not. Are you guys participating in that at all?
So there's the Valley Adams Farm to Table Facebook page that was just recently created. It's an open group, which I think is complimentary to the Food Coalition efforts. And so I am aware of that, and we've been posting Food Coalition events or discussions on that open group. And so I think it will just help bring new people to the table in a different way, and the Food Coalition is hopefully going to be an umbrella for all of these entities, all of these, you know, different moving parts.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think it's complimentary, and I'm, I'm optimistic that it might reach new people that we have not reached in the Food Coalition, so I think it's all good.
Okay, anything else from Melissa? All right, thank you Melissa, have a great day.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on down our agenda, next person up is David.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Seems like it's been a long time since I talked to you. So we're catching up and digging out, so just got to give you an idea of like how behind we are with tickets anyways. Normally we have about 25 tickets in our queue at any one time active tickets. We got about 175 right now, so we're trying to catch up on that, and we probably will in the next week or two. So it'll be better.
That's before the transition.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, if you remember before when we talked about that, we'd shoot for four-hour response time and a four-hour solution, it can't be guaranteed, that's the average. I looked back, and in January we were at eight hours and eight hours for that. The last one I looked at was something that doubled that. So the resolution time was 16 days, and the response time was over eight hours and something like 12 hours, something like that, so just keep that in mind.
So David, is this a flip in your, in time, or is this something that you need to look at scheduling? So David, is this a blip in your in time, or is this something that you need to look at scheduling or, you know, another employee for next year or?
I think it's it's hard to say. I I'm hesitant to react to it because of it's a COVID thing going on. I think it's a blip probably more than likely. I'm it's it's really detailed within this bubble of what's going on right now, because some of the things we're doing are supporting staff in the ways we've normally done, and then in new ways, so that adds extra work. And we knew that we'd have a bunch of tickets come in all at once, right, when everything opened back up. I think we even talked about that a little bit. So, yeah, I don't know yet if it's an ongoing, I mean, if this continues on, probably that would be helpful, yeah, for from a kind of a low-level support level. Adminis administrative assistant kind of rover type thing might be something to consider.
I don't know if it would be helpful at all, but Melissa Hamilton is really up to speed on the new program. So if you guys need some help, you know, with training or something like that, she may have time available to come over and help.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's kind of interesting because like the training thing, you know, we put out, I don't know that anybody's gotten back to us on the Office 365 training. I'll check with Tamara, but I hadn't heard anybody's, you know, we put out that email to give people training, but I will, yeah, definitely think, keep that in mind to tap into other people. And we've looked at that in the past, you know, kind of, we call them, I think in two thousand and twelve, I was calling them a department-level liaison where things got, it was early on in trying to build the IT program, and I was kind of looking ahead and saying, well, what if we add these restrictions and it causes extra time to do these, you know, things? What does that look like? Do we need more staff, or do we need to have like a power user per department? And I was calling them at the time, Department Liaisons or something like that. And that's something we could look at, too. I just don't know right now, just because it's such a weird time, if it's a real thing. It seemed to be working fairly well when we keep those numbers down up until about, you know, February, actually the end of February, things started to be picking up, and then, of course, in March sometime, it really kind of went like that, so.
Well, I think it's a situation because of COVID, everything is kind of backed up now. It's going to take a month or two to get through.
Yeah, it's backed up in the new ways of doing business or different ways of doing business, like even the scheduling program, I mean, that might have taken Tamara a day or two, maybe longer, to work with departments to figure out what they wanted to schedule, what the time was, the back and forth with that. And that's on top of her normal duties, so that kind of thing, I think will go away, like I said, as time goes on, I'm hopeful. I think I think approving the what we have is probably our first best bet instead of adding, you know, another layer, especially right now. It's my best guess, you know.
So did you guys do a survey at all to find employees within the system that actually know office that might be liaisoned for you?
We haven't. In the past, they've kind of presented themselves really just, it's been apparent in different areas, you know, somebody's that's, you can tell they're helping out that office, you know. And so it's pretty easy to identify. In fact, I've had some in my mind, and in fact, a few years ago, I approached a couple of those people to see if they wanted, tried to poach them from from other offices, just, you know, to see if they wanted to apply for positions that we had open. So we haven't done that, but we could do something like that. It's, you know, it's it's a tricky one to the type of use we're doing with some of those products. A lot of our our process and our workflow in different offices is really region spelled out pretty pretty specifically, and doesn't allow itself to have a huge amount of flexibility outside of some positions, I don't know if I'm making myself clear about, where they would use those tools in that way. Does that make sense? It's they're using them not in a limited way, but in a real specific way. And so they might have a template that comes up in Word that they fill out and hit submit. Outside of using Word in that way, they're not really using it in, you know, in ways that other types of jobs might use it, you know. But that's something we can look at, too, for sure. So, yeah, we're going to go back to Office 365 email, we're going to, we had a blip there again, a delay, but we're going to roll it out this week unless it's some kind of major glitch. We'll have that transitioned over on, I think you probably saw the email, I think it's Thursday night, Friday morning, and then we'll be all hands on deck to have all staff available to help people with their calendars, their contacts, using it. Tamara's put together a real good packet, I thought, on how to use that stuff, and and she's emailed every department, every individual, every individual, I think, or at least their lead, to get training for those people if they need it. A lot of it will probably come after the fact when they go, it's a new email system, and that's happened in the past, even with new versions of our current email system, which is really familiar to people. Looking different is enough to throw people off. Something being in a different place when you click is enough to throw people off in their, in their, you know, when they want to get their business done. So we're working on that, working with the Sheriff's Office to put together, and the sheriff has provided a a list of team members for the software transition, the project, and we're going to kick that off here, hopefully in June, July for that law enforcement and start with the training, data migration and those type of things, and run the both those systems in tandem for twelve to eighteen months until we finally get off the old system and onto the new system. So there's each functional area is representative represented, the jail, the civil process, patrol, and nine-one-one, and then IP. And initially I'll be the the local lead on that project with the vendor, and then if that needs to transition, which it probably will, to somebody else, whether it's the Sheriff's Office or another IT person, that'll probably happen later summer, fall, something like that. Working with the clerk court office on the new elections equipment, the new elections process, it's a big change for those guys, and so Tamara's going to be working with them specifically to kind of get all the components they need to use the county-provided equipment in conjunction with the new state process and the new state software for doing elections, which we looked at about a year ago when we were down at the IAC convention, and Secretary of State's office showed it to all the IT people, and we've been working with the clerk's office for a while, but it's coming up quick and kind of surprised me anyways, so we kind of want to jump on that. Need still need to meet with Century Link about the nine-one-one move from nine-one-one up there to over to the EOC to kind of get some technical things worked out. Working with the courts on video, we have the software in place for the treasurer's online map that still hasn't gone any further because of some waiting on, I'm just going to, the state, we're waiting on the state for in some cases there, but Kara was going to work, has been working with me and and Gabe to put an online map together that provides more information for the taxpayer, where they can go on and grab even more information than they already can without actually calling or coming into the building. So that'll be great. We've got, we, there's a software component that we had to purchase, and that's been purchased and is in place, so we're just still kind of trying to go forward with that, but kind of cackles a little bit until we get a response. And the state's busy, too, obviously, with what they've got going on. Having a meeting next week with IAC and NACO, and it's going to be a virtual meeting, and it'll be a lot shorter than the one-day meeting that we normally have, it'll be about a two-hour meeting. We'll just kind of touch base and keep those kind of groups going. And so we have the IAC IP group, which is, you know, we're trying to integrate more and more with Idaho Association of Counties, and then the NACO group, which is kind of a holdover from that training that I went through last year, and we still meet periodically just to ping each other with different ideas, Office 365, scheduling, all these different things. Some of these ideas come from other counties around the country, and we help them out in some cases. And I did have somebody come and look at the audiovisual equipment in this room here. Pathways Solutions LLC came in and fixed the HDMI cord. There was some kind of connection problem down underneath the diaphragm over there, that they were able to take care of, and they provided a quote, I don't have it with me, but if we were to look at replacing all of the equipment in here with something, I can't remember now, and it's in my budget packet that you'll get shortly, which is, you know, electronic packet with all those quotes and everything involved in part of it, but I think it's something like, yeah, it's something like twelve to seventeen thousand dollars if we wanted. And you can kind of think of that in in that context for any of the rooms that we have. We have about six rooms that have these kind of setups with audiovisual components, mixers, overhead projectors, microphones and speakers and those sorts of things. Those all run about that much, and we've got about six of those rooms, so that's kind of heads up, too. And some of those were built and put in place when the courthouse was built, and that year was two thousand and ten?
So David, are you?
Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five.
Are you prioritizing which room is going to be first?
No, I'm going to bring that to the commissioners and allow you guys to do that, if you if you would. I mean, it really, to me, they're 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 all sort of important, but not important, and I'm not being funny by by any means. It's, you know, they work, right? They're annoying in some cases like this one here, so it's really up to the courts and the commissioners on how you want to go with that. It's it's going to be a chunk of money right there. But if you look at two thousand and five, that's fifteen years ago for some of that equipment. Some of the equipment has died, and we replaced components of it. It's old enough where we have to buy those off of eBay or, you know, Amazon or something because they don't sell them anymore. So it may be worth something looking at.
Is there a security risk in that at all?
What's that?
Is there a security risk?
No, these are just, these are, there's no, yeah, these are just, no, these are just mixers and things like that. But that that it'll be in the budget packet, and you can put that in the context of these other projects, the mobile things that we might go with, secure cybersecurity stuff that we'll be talking about and all that. So we can put it all in the mix there, and that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for David?
Thank you for all your things you've been doing.
I'll let him know.
I'm glad you're healthy and back in action.
I am, I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Cindy, good morning.
Should have the forms for the RVs and the short-term rentals done by Thursday. We plan on sending those out to known people that need them. We have lots of calls coming in. We have a pretty stacked agenda in June. It was interesting this weekend. I drove from High Valley down Dry Buck to Banks and dropped down into Banks. About every two hundred feet was a big sign that said fiber optic cable, you know, a big red sign. So I guess that's where it goes through and comes up to Smiths Ferry. It was pretty interesting.
Over High Valley?
Uh huh.
Yeah, it's coming in for a moment.
No, down to Dry Buck, and then I think it probably goes to, yeah, it went down Dry Buck and probably into Montour. Had a conversation with a member of the Tamarack team, and they're proceeding with the Marina, you know, in conjunction with the BOR and state. And I once again pointed out the Idaho code that says that, you know, state agencies are supposed to comply with local land use planning. And so they're going to take that back again. I mean, we wrote the letter last year, the year before, saying we want to be involved, haven't heard a word back. So I continue to push that.
Do we need to go higher? Do we need to go to the governor's office, or he's making IDL, redo all of their contracts, everybody?
We send it to state parks and the Bureau of Reclamation.
Sometimes they'll do it and sometimes they don't. Same with the Forest Service and all their stuff. They don't have to, but it would be nice if they would.
Our ordinance says they're supposed to.
They're supposed to, but.
But when we did Tamarack, we did two different CUPs up there, one for the state land and one for the private lands. So the state did comply for the ski hill. And I don't know who's in charge down here at the Marina area. If that's so, maybe they'll put them all over the lake without any input. Who knows?
So you did send one to the Bureau of Reclamation, so they know, okay.
And he's got a, he wants me to call him back on some other matter, and I'll bring it up again.
Okay.
And find out where that went. So anyway, we're just busy. You free for me?
Any questions? Nope, all right.
See ya.
Thank you. Larry? Morning, sir.
Morning. So our campground's ready. Raff Park's ready. Got a few little things to do there.
Campground, where at? What campground? I don't know.
Wellington. That's the only one that we really have finished yet. It's on my bucket list to get the other one done, I'm telling you. But the Raff Park is done, and I think that I think the ramp, as Commissioner Hasbrook said, came out really, really good.
Who ended up doing that work?
Huh?
Who ended up doing the work on that?
Danny and I, and then I had a couple volunteers who bought all the material from, oh, we had granite go down and do some work down there, too. I think total cost repair is going to be right when you all figure it out, fifteen hundred dollars.
It wasn't granite, it was weight.
I'm sorry, it was okay gravel.
Okay gravel.
Yes, yeah, I apologize for that. And they did a great job. They reacted quickly, came down, great price. Working with Danny on his training, that's going well. I'm, you know, trying to get him all phases of things, it's
Good.
Yeah. We still need to open Boulder. I'm hoping to get up there later this week before this weekend and get it opened up, or I don't have four-wheel drive in my truck right now. Yeah, he knows about that. Yeah. Yeah. Smiths Ferry Cats finished for our maintenance. Smiths Ferry Cat's put away, Cascade Cat's put away, the Donley Cat has put away. We've still got two cats, the Challenger and the front-end loader Francie Walts to finish. I'm not going to put anybody on up there until we can actually get in it, out of there on a timely fashion with the road construction that's going on up there. Unfortunately, we found that we're having a problem with the vaulted toilet up there. It's full of water. I'm going to, I'm going to have a guy go in and drain it, inspect it. I'm hoping it's a seal and not a crack in the vault. If it is, it'll just be a complete replacement. So we'll see what happens there.
And that one, Francie Walsh is a single, and you want to put a double?
Yeah, we want to put a double in. I'd like to save that single, though.
Unless it's cracked.
Yeah, that's the problem. And I've already put a call into IDPR just because it's too late to do, to get in this year's funds for grants, and they do have some emergency funds available, so I'm going to talk to them about the possibility of getting funds for a double up there and get, taking care of that way. Got a call from Jerry Wirtley from the Dog sled guys. He's real interested in moving the starting from McCall to Cascade, which I support real strongly. One of the issues we always had is how do you, how do you measure the economic impact of that race? Well, having to start here, we can actually see the economic impact. They had a lot of problems up there with the ITD and some other things, so.
They left a little ski hill, didn't they, this year?
Yeah, they ran it a little ski hill, had them parked at Westface. You know how big that parking lot is? It was completely packed. They were parking across the street, and ITD said they could not put a have people stopping traffic, and they had trouble getting permits and stuff, so, and it was, it was really a hassle. They they would like to move down here, and I think that'd be a great move for Cat, for Cascade and for the southern. I I imagine they'll finish up there.
Where will they start at down here?
Van Wyck.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is when I got the call, I was like, and this is something we've all thought about last couple of years, and all of a sudden you get a call, and holy moly, that's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I got, just got a call back during the meeting from Patty from Air Masters on the eight sanitizers. So it's forty-nine ninety-five a gallon. I can get twenty gallons, they'll have them drop ship here real quickly. I can get the eight for the vaulted toilets. Now, is that something that would be charged off on something? I mean, there's room in in the park's budget, but is this something that should go into the COVID?
Yes. Marc, make sure you bill it out to COVID.
Do we want more than twenty gallons? We can get as, almost as much as we want. This is the foaming hand sanitizer.
Well, within this building, we've got just a little hand pumps.
Right.
So the foaming probably wouldn't work.
Right.
But I don't know, you know, you might check with Jeff, do you have hand sanitizer down there that you need or the annex? I'll check with some of the other.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I would say, Larry, that the twenty gallons would keep you started because it's different than what we're using up here.
Right.
And just keep it for recreation, and then if you need more than, have to order another twenty.
And that'll put one in all of our vaults that we have currently, nothing in the future. And the only reason she can give us the eight at this point is because IDL put their order off until the end of the year for some reason. They're just not going to do anything till then.
Perfect, that's good for. That's, that's perfect for.
Yeah, I know, I was kind of surprised. So I still do, most of my meetings are still on Zoom. Starting to get used to it. It's kind of weird. I got a funny feeling some of them are, you know, they'll be, the good thing is, now that we're learning this, even if we do come back together, if you can't make the meeting, you can still watch it. People will have that, that training. Yeah. So I talked to Kevin from the Sheriff's Department. We talked four years ago about putting signs out that talk about the age of people have to wear helmets if they're on an ATV or UTV. And being a grandfather, I'm much more, I get much more emotional when I see people running around with some little kid on their on their lap on an ATV, and and he, so Kevin was going to talk to IDPR and see if they could make it so signs, and I said I had install, I would, I would install them at some of our high points of use. That sage hang closure, I did talk to the supervisor from the Boise. They put some signs up at little tiny things about this side that you can't read at the head of the trail. So I put another call in, ask him put a a map, because it isn't all roads that are closed. And we're going to, hopefully we can get someplace on that. It just didn't come out too well. And uh, we're gonna, hopefully we can get someplace on that. It just didn't come out too well. Fisher Bingham and I uh, met with Kyle from Midas Gold and Jeff, talking about some of the road issues. So and, and I came away from that a little bit, a little more confident because the EA is gonna have our new trail system in uh, as part of the plan with the two bridges and uh, I, I wanna really stress that I don't want the road John's Brick closed until our new trail is completely open and ready to go. Because the one thing that, you know, they could say, well, it's a year away from here, but we're gonna be closing this off and on with red and green lights. But the truth is, we can't take a groomer up that hill with our transport trucker. There's no way that, that would be acceptable. So and, and I thought Kyle was really uh, good about that and I'm hoping that that'll happen. I just wanna make sure we're all together on that notion. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thanks for getting your comments to me quickly too. I said, thanks for getting those comments.
Oh, you're welcome. I actually, um, I could have done, some of the punctuation wasn't exact or some of that, but I know you needed them right away.
It's going in an Excel format.
Huh?
They, they have the comment form as an Excel spreadsheet.
Yes, yeah.
So it doesn't need to be perfect.
Yeah, there you go. Anything else?
Nope.
Cool.
Good job, Uncle Barton.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary. Good morning. Thank you for being patient.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we got a whole, Jeff had me call Cody Jansen. Um, he's your on-call engineer. And he is gonna help us put together a list of tasks for the Epstein Road Bridge and um, an estimate of engineering costs so that we can put that out for bid. So that's been really useful. He's not gonna charge us. He's just doing it for us, for, yeah, to help us out. So I sent him um, the proposal that I have so far and the NEPA which I finished. And he's gonna put everything together, so. And I taught, spoke with um, Carleen Herring. She's the local contact for EDA. And there's still plenty of funding from that emergency declaration 2018 and 2019. There's plenty of money, so we should be good. And that grant, if we're successful, um, that has admin funding in it and money for project management. We're gonna add some in there for that. Of course, with hiring an engineer, we'll have to discuss how that will go with the project management.
But that's gonna be an outside contractor, right, Joe? Okay?
Yeah. Kara Utter, she set up a mapping program for me. Cause I do a lot of mapping and I do, you know, measurements and things like that. So um, she set up my own program and gave me training on that. It's really great. It's really nice.
And you should know, Mary, too, that Conservation District over here has a technology too, that you could go in and touch a piece of ground and just draw a line around and it'll tell you the acreage. Pretty darn close.
Yeah, nice. Okay, yeah, thanks. I'm waiting for two proposals to open up for the consoles for the Sheriff's Office. So they couldn't give me a date. They just said to watch and um, so I think that they're pretty good sources for that funding. Still looking for funding for the road, for radios for roads and several other things. There's a little bit of money out there for recreation, so, and I talked to Larry a little bit about that. But if anybody has any requests, you know, not, not huge amounts of money, but if anybody has any recreation thoughts, send them to me.
For single track sidewalks.
Yeah. I'll talk to, who's the best contact for those?
Andrew.
Andrew, okay. All right, that's, that's what I've had going on, just a lot of, lot of searches for funding.
Been busy, did you hear?
Yeah.
Any more questions for Mary?
Mary, I did send you an email a couple of weeks ago about recycling grants. And I know that we've been super busy, but if you could put that on your radar in the next few months.
Yeah, I've been watching.
Yeah, I just did a quick search and found a couple of possibilities.
Oh, okay.
There were some local, like, didn't require a lot more digging in, just to.
Okay, well, if you want, send them my way and I can research them further.
Yeah, just link a way to fund some of that, okay?
Good, good.
The EPA funding that um, you sent Gabe and I, that's for uh, facilities that already have anaerobic digestors.
I think we should go to Costco and Amazon and get money to put recycling centers in. They're the largest supplier of cardboard in the world.
Yeah.
They should have.
Yeah, and a lot comes up here.
And a lot comes up here, my house.
I would actually go and, you know, research those, just to see if there's anything out there.
Yeah, I will, yeah.
All right, if no more questions, thank you, Mary. Okay, uh, we're gonna take a quick break, Jeff, and then we'll be right back to you. Don't forget your mask.